It's good to see everybody here. I would like to get going with our our council meeting. It is seven twelve. We're a little bit late, but hopefully we can get going and and get some business taken care of tonight. We have a full council with us tonight, so we'd like to begin with a pledge of allegiance. Is there anyone here? Anybody have a flag that we can see? How about I lead the pledge of allegiance tonight? How's that? Can you hear me? All right, everybody stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'd also like to begin with a invocation or an inspirational thought. Is there anyone out there that would like to do that for us?
Mayor, I'd be happy to do that. Our dear only father, we're thankful to be gathered this evening, thankful for our city leaders and for the service that they provide to our community, thankful for our residents and for the state and the country in which we live and the freedoms we enjoy. We ask for a blessing this evening that we'll be able to conduct the people's business and with complete transparency. And we ask for a special blessing that the pandemic and the negative effects of the economy will be stayed and that we will be able to return to normal and and find happiness and health in our lives. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ amen.
All right, thank you, Ben. Let's see, well, next on the agenda. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest with anything that's on the agenda tonight? All right. In our consent agenda tonight, we have the minutes of our our council meeting from March seventeenth, two thousand twenty, and also the minutes of our our work session, city council work session minutes of March seventeenth, two thousand twenty as well. Has the council had an opportunity to read those minutes? If they have, are there any additions or corrections?
For the sake of of this meeting going forward more smoothly, mayor, it might be best to have each one every every time we do a motion and every time we have a vote, do it as a roll call where you call out the name and then the corresponding council member will acknowledge by taking themselves off mute and say yea or nay.
All right, sounds good. Councilman Miller, have you had any additions or corrections?
No additions, no corrections.
Councilmember Montoya.
No.
Councilmember Bowman.
No.
Councilman Meacham.
No.
And Councilman Hathaway.
No.
Thank you. All right. Also on the consent agenda, we have the bills for eight hundred forty thousand four hundred nineteen dollars and sixty six cents. Any questions or concerns on the bills? Councilman Miller.
No.
Councilmember Montoya.
No.
Councilmember Bowman.
No.
Councilman Meacham.
No.
Councilman Hathaway.
No.
Thank you. All right, we have also item C one on the consent agenda is resolution zero four zero one, two thousand twenty. A resolution renewing a water use agreement with Dr. Fred H. C. Openshaw. The item C two, resolution zero four zero two, two thousand twenty, a resolutions renewing a water use agreement with Dennis C. and Kathy Brandon. Item C three, resolution zero four zero three, two thousand twenty, a resolution renewing a water use agreement with Daniel M. Olson. And C four, resolution zero four zero four, two thousand twenty, a resolution approving a water use agreement with Royce J. and Georgie Johnson. Also on the consent agenda, we have C five, resolution zero four zero five, two thousand twenty. A resolution approving the Santaquin City Municipal Wastewater Planning Program report for two thousand nineteen. And last, all of all items, C six, resolution zero four zero six, two thousand twenty. A resolution declaring surplus property, vehicle and furnishings. Any questions on these consent agenda items? Councilman Miller.
No questions.
Councilmember Montoya.
No questions.
Councilmember Bowman.
No questions.
Councilman Meacham.
No.
Councilman Hathaway.
No questions.
Great, I'll look for a motion then on this on this consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilman Miller. Do we have a second?
A second.
Councilmember Bowman, that was you. I got you. You lit up. So a second by Councilmember Bowman. Let's do this individually. Councilman Miller.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Councilmember Bowman.
Aye.
Councilmember Meacham.
Aye.
And Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
That was unanimous. The consent agenda was passed. Okay, the public forum tonight, do we have anybody signed in tonight?
Yes, we do, mayor. So give me a second so I can get this situated, right?
All right, we're waiting on you.
Jason is still muted. All right, can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
A number of public comments during the public forum, and I will just read through these one by one. So the first one is from Tanner and Riley Lason. Comment is, hello, we are counting down the days until we can move into our new home in Santaquin. Our new home will have a two-car garage, but we have three vehicles. Because of this, we are planning to park one of our vehicles as well as our four-wheeler and trailer on the side of our house. Due to the current regulations, we are going to have to tear out the lawn and cap off the sprinkler system and then gravel the side yard next to our garage. Hiring someone to put in a sprinkler system and lay down sod just for us to tear it out the next week seems redundant. We would love it if we could have a gravel slash RV pad on our side yard next to our garage in place of the sod and sprinkler system. Thank you for considering our request. The next comment is from Jordan Peters. His comment is, my name is Jordan Peters and I am purchasing a new build from D.R. Horton in the Foothill Village. I had asked about the gravel instead of sod and sprinklers on the garage side weeks ago. I think it's ridiculous to not be to not be an option. A lot of people are going to need that parking for RVs, ATVs, or additional vehicles. If they don't need it now, they probably will be, they probably will in the future. Also, without it, it basically cuts off any access to the backyard for equipment. It makes finishing your landscape in the backyard extremely difficult. I think it is a great thing to offer, and I hope we will be allowed to have this option available to us. Our home is to be completed in the middle end of May. The next comment is from Chris Wegener. His comment is, hello, I'm moving to Santaquin and buying a D.R. Horton home. I believe that there is a council meeting April seventh to discuss gravel on the side of the property instead of sod. This will keep the streets cleaner by having the extra parking and also help conserve water due to having less grass. The next public comment is from Devin Ray. His comment is, I am building a house with D.R. Horton on the east side of the freeway in Santaquin, and I wanted to voice my opinion about the landscaping next to my garage as I drive through a lot of new communities. I've noticed at least eight out of ten houses have torn their grass up on the side of their garage and put gravel down for RV parking. I think it would be great if I could have the option to have gravel or grass. I have two other friends building in the same neighborhood that would like gravel as well. It would save a lot of time and money to not have to pull out the sod and take out the sprinkler system just to put gravel in. Thanks for letting me voice my opinion. The next public comment is from Shayla Murr. Her comment is, to whom it may concern, my name is Shayla Murr and me and my husband are under contract to purchase a new home from D.R. Horton. Our home is supposed to be done beginning of June, and we would like to put in a gravel driveway on the side of our house to park our trailer on. We would like for D.R. Horton to be able to do this for us before we close. And the only way they can do this is is if you approve the new revised language they have submitted. This will save us in the builder time and money if this is approved. I know that a few other that are under contract would also like this as an option. I hope this email helps with your decision. Thank you for your time. Finally, the last public comment is from Ben Murr. His comment is, to whom it may concern, I am writing today to express my interest in Santaquin City allowing a change to the landscaping requirements for the Foothill Village subdivision being constructed by D.R. Horton. Currently, the homes will be built and finished with grass landscaping on the side of the home, and the alternative would be to allow them to build with driveway with gravel driveways instead. This is very appealing to current and potential homeowners to give extra space to park vehicles and trailers without damaging grass landscaping or ruining the aesthetic of the homes when people park trailers and stuff on the grass, which happened in my old neighborhood. This caused another problem as well. When the vehicles or trailers were driven into the road, they invariably tracked mud onto the roadway, presenting a danger for motorcycles or bikes, et cetera, et cetera. I think it's a good idea and could be perused. Thanks for your consideration. Those are all the public comments.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that has any comment on this? Or for the public forum? If not, we'll go into our awards. We have tonight, we have the employee of the month, Taylor Sutherland, and I think we have a picture of him here. We'd like an award.
Yep, mayor, I'm gonna scroll down through this packet. It appears that we may or may not be having some issues with our connectivity to YouTube because so many of us are logging into the same account. We all use it by default, but from what I could hear when when Councilmember Montoya was on and her son was behind her listening to YouTube, it is being projected, so I'm not sure there's a concern. Is Steph maybe feeling like there is? But let me go to sorry, it's a little hard to maneuver on this because everybody's heads are underneath my scroll bar. Right, this is all the minutes from before. And the bills.
Ben, I think you need to share your screen. We're only seeing your face.
Okay, hold on a second.
I can see the bill. I see the bills.
I can see it too. Yeah, we're seeing the bills.
Okay. This was the water agreements. Sorry, there's quite a bit of that. We're scrolling through the whole meeting. We'll just go from there. Point by point. And the water agreement, the municipal water report. And the surplus, and we're to Taylor Sutherland.
There he is. So we congratulate Taylor on being the employee of the month. He's been a great asset for our city and the fire department and for all that he does, and we had the opportunity to present that to him last week, and he was shocked, needless to say. So anyway, we're grateful for for Taylor.
Okay. We'll just roll right to the next one. So just just for a way of recognition, Taylor Sutherland is our employee of the month. He was nominated for this recognition because of his outstanding work on our fire department as our fire code officer, which can be very unpopular, a very unpopular responsibility. His role in his role, he works directly with the code review committee and the development review committee. He signs off on plan reviews, does life safety inspections, and signs off on business licenses. He handles his responsibility with the utmost professionalism. He has a willing attitude and is always looking for ways to serve within his department and otherwise. Taylor grew up in Santaquin and has spent many years in the military and currently serves with the Army Reserve Unit as a military police officer. Thank you, Taylor, for being a great example to all of our staff and citizens within your dedicated service with your dedicated service. You deserve this recognition. So a round of applause, I guess, if you will, for for Taylor.
All right, next up, am I okay, Ben?
Sure.
All right, next up, we have an Eagle Scout Award recognition for Tyler Reeves. We also have met with him, was able to meet with him, and I'm not gonna read it. Ben, would you like to read it?
Sure. On behalf of Santaquin City Council, I want to extend my congratulations to you for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout within the Boy Scouts of America program. I also want to extend my appreciation and recognition for your work and leadership demonstrated when completing your Eagle project, re-roofing and repainting the restrooms at Centennial Park. Centennial Park is a centerpiece of our annual Orchard Days Community Celebration. Many of the facilities in the park were in disrepair, possibly needing to be replaced. Through your efforts and the leadership of your fellow scouts, you restored this facility and extended its useful life. We are so pleased with your ambition, work ethic, and leadership skills. We are also very thankful for your example to others of the importance of serving the community in which you live. Santaquin City is pleased to have such a remarkable young man represent our community in the Boy Scouts of America program. You make us proud with your achievements. You have a great start in life, and I'd monitor you to continue to serve your fellow citizens. With great appreciation, Merrick Kirk, at Ponce here. Mayor, you're still muted.
Oh, sorry. He's a good young man. Give him a round of applause. So next on the agenda, we have item six C is the award of the Summit Ridge Water System Improvements Contract Upsized Backflow Preventers Formal.
Mayor and Council. Okay, Mayor and Council, we had an issue that we discovered this past year when we put in the soccer park. It was drawing a whole bunch of water out of our secondary irrigation system, and it shouldn't have. There was plenty of piping capacity in that system to not have it have a negative effect on the residential homes of that area. And it turned out that when we started going backwards, that the backflow device that was put in was put in substantially smaller than what should have been put in for the residential use that's out there, along with the use now of the city's soccer fields. This needed to be upsized. It does not meet state standards. And so this is a proposal to upgrade the four-inch backflow preventer to a ten-inch backflow preventer. It'll service our park, but it'll also provide added capacity for the entire Summit Ridge area. And as such, because it is a capacity enhancement, it is considered impact fee eligible. And so with that, the city staff would recommend a motion to contract with Mitchell Excavation. We did obtain three bids in the amount of thirty-seven thousand four hundred fifty-nine dollars for the installation of the new ten-inch backflow preventer meter and related infrastructure within the Summit Ridge development area.
All right, I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to award a contract to Mitchell Excavation Incorporated in the amount of thirty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars for the installation of a new ten-inch backflow preventer meter and related infrastructure within the Summit Ridge area.
Hey, we have a motion by Councilman Meacham. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Montoya. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Did that get everybody?
I think so, but mayor, we'll wanna do roll call votes for everything just so that it that way you're calling and we get an announcement for everybody. All right, but we're good for this time. Yeah.
All right. Are any opposed? I got them all. All right, moving on. We have no public hearing. So building permits and business licenses.
Right, Mayor and Council. I have a building permit report for you tonight. And as you can see, we were a little bit behind pace the last time we had a meeting, but we've since caught up and we're about on pace where we were last year, if not a little bit ahead. So currently, we're at sixty-five new single-family residential dwelling units and fourteen multifamily residential dwelling units for a total of seventy-nine new units this year. In regards to business license, I don't have any new to report to you this time. I know we do have a handful of new ones, but due to our administrative assistant who who monitors business licensing, she was out of the office today, so I will have have those to report to you at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item is discussion of possible action regarding the approval of the Countryside Estates Platte E, including the acceptance of the right-of-way dedication.
Mayor and Council, this came before you during your last meeting, and there was concerns with regard to the hammerhead turnaround that is proposed on the Countryside Estates Development. And the council asked us to do a little bit more research to see what the cost might be and the participation level, what that might be with regard to alternatives that might be a little bit more of an improvement to the overall area. It's important to note that the proposal that was provided, which we are calling Alternative One, is a betterment to the entire neighborhood. I say that because right now, the asphalt right here would be widened by nineteen and a half feet. It would also have a hammerhead turnaround that would be installed that would allow for the turnaround of a fire department truck and also would be large enough because of that for garbage trucks and other. And it does add three new homes, which draws more water through the system, improves the culinary water quality of that area. However, we also explored two other alternatives and brought those forward to the council, and we wanted to go through and discuss the merits and drawbacks of each of those proposals. Alternative One is as is proposed. Number one, it meets all Santaquin City and International Fire Code standards. It provides a betterment to the existing traffic configuration by widening the asphalt surface, providing a turnaround area sufficient of size for the fire department use and provides a location for snow removal and for city snow plows to turn around. What that means is as plows are coming down, they can push the snow past the driveway entrances, have a snow load area, back their truck up and then pull out. And it makes for a very quick, easy way to snowplow that road. In addition, it provides a betterment to the existing culinary water system by increasing water flows as a result of adding additional users to the system. And it presents this option, it presents no additional cost to Santaquin City to approve this and move forward. The drawbacks is that it does not provide sufficient space to allow for large trucks to turn around without backing up into that hammered area. And lastly, the neighborhood residents would not be happy with the approval of option or alternative one, as they would love to see a bulb out or cul-de-sac type turnaround. The second alternative that we reviewed is to put in a bulb out or a turnaround. Steph evaluated this option, and you can tell from its configuration that these interior squares, these are what are considered the buildable area of a lot. So if I were to build a new home, I could with the with the proper setbacks from the front, the rear, and the sides have a footprint that would allow for a home to be built in the square. By putting in a bulb out right here, it diminishes the size of the buildable area to a maximum depth of only seventeen feet, a very, very narrow house. And and so obviously, a bulb out would be very impactful on this third lot. The city staff met with Mr. Paul Freeman, the applicant for this proposed project, and discussed this option with him, and he was not in favor of this because he would not have sufficient buildable area to be able to put in or construct the type of home that he had intended to build in this lot. However, he would be opening open to the concept and the idea of selling this parcel to Santaquin City so that this bulb out could be constructed. He would be willing to sell this parcel at a price of ninety thousand dollars, and that's based on the construction value and profitability he anticipated on the lot in the building, as well as the city putting in all of the costs of the bulb out, the subsurface asphalt, curb and gutter. Those costs for the construction are anticipated to be or estimated to be forty-four thousand dollars. The benefits of this option would be it provides a different option for long-term solution to traffic control. It enhances the safety of the six homes in the affected area, similar to the hammerhead option, without the need to back up large trucks. It also provides or potentially allows for a pocket park. One of the ideas was if this cannot be used for a buildable area, could the city put in a pocket park, and would that be beneficial to this whole area here? The city has really two options. If we went down here, we could and went with alternative two is that we could try to sell this lot for to a home builder who might be able to build a more uniquely shaped home, or we could put in a pocket park. That was suggested by the developer. If we were to try to recoup the costs of of selling that lot, clearly, it would be diminished in value, and we think at best, we would be able to get perhaps sixty thousand dollars by selling that lot. But if we were to install a pocket park, that would come at an additional hundred thousand dollars or give or take. And so ultimately, the total cost of that that parcel would be a hundred thirty-four thousand dollars upfront if the city were to move forward and potentially more if if we were to put in a pocket park, potentially less if we were to sell that lot. As as this relates to, we understand and are very empathetic to the fact that this type of road configuration would be more beneficial to the area. The hammerhead is a betterment, but this would be a greater benefit. And and the question the council has to ask itself is whether or not the the cost of this or the investment of this taxpayer resources into this area is justified. And we always have to look at that in relation to the city as a whole. How could the city use a hundred and forty-four, a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars to benefit all residents as opposed to benefiting six residents or six residential homes? And just for comparative purposes, we put out there that a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars represents the value of three police vehicles, seventy-five percent of the value of an ambulance, twenty-five percent of the value of a fire pumper truck, or in other words, a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars represents a cost of thirty-eight dollars to every home in Santaquin. The third option is that the city could deny approval. This is not an advisable option, but the city could take that stance and say it's not approved. With the development meeting all Santaquin City codes and standards, such an action would inevitably lead to a lawsuit. And in such cases, there would be a very high probability that the developer would prevail. If the city lost the lawsuit, the city would likely be liable for all of those costs found in alternative two, as well as any damages and legal fees that were you know, put together as a from both sides as they tried to defend this lawsuit or prosecute this lawsuit. The benefits of denying it, of course, is that it prevents the development moving forward, and that would make your existing residents perhaps a little happier. The drawbacks would be the legal fees, lost staff time, and lost costs, all the lost costs from alternative two. So in summary, Santaquin City staff feels very strongly that this is clearly a policy decision. The council could move forward with option alternative number two or alternative number one, but we do not recommend alternative number three. If the council believes that the investment on the use of city resources to the tune of a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars If the council believes that the investment on the use of city resources to the tune of a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in this area is a good investment, and the city goes forward and moves and builds a bulbout, the council would approve alternative or option number two. And if the council wanted to move forward with the betterments that are currently outlined in alternative number one, without any additional cost to the city, the city council should approve alternative number one. With that said, we turn it over to the council for their discussion.
Hey, Council, any, any thoughts, any concerns?
Remember that if you do want to speak, you need to unmute your mic. I'm going to stop sharing this for a minute so you can see each other.
Yeah, that's tough. That's a decision.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start, Mayor. Hey, go ahead, David.
Mike, the thing I'm having a hard time with is is the fact that this, this thing's been dragged on for quite a while now. And I know the decisions that were made in the previous council kind of carries over to this council.
Right.
I feel it's put us in a situation where you've got, I mean, I'm sympathetic to the people up there, but I just can't see San Quentin putting out a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars for that. It just doesn't serve all of the people. So my option, my, my thing would be option number one.
Okay, any other thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, I made my voice known in our last council meeting. I think we need to go with option one. Again, I understand the concern, but I think it's our, our best option at this point.
Okay, any other thoughts?
If there are no other thoughts, then a motion to approve the Countryside Estates Platte E, including the acceptance of right-of-way, would be the motion.
Okay, I'd look for, I'd look for motion.
I would make that motion so moved as Ben stated it.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Meekum. Do you have a second?
All second.
We have a second by Councilman Hathaway. Any further discussion? I think we've talked this out. Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Councilman Miller.
Aye.
Councilman Meekum.
Aye.
And Councilmember Bowman.
May.
Okay, that was four one. Motion passes. Okay, moving on. Our next item is nine B, Resolution Zero Four, Zero Seven, Two Thousand Twenty, a resolution approving amendment number two to the Summit Ridge Development Agreement.
Okay, I just need to get back to sharing my screen here. And I, okay, here we go. Very good. Okay. We are now to item B, Resolution Zero Four, Zero Seven, Two Thousand Twenty, the resolution approving the second amendment to the Summit Ridge Development Agreement. Mayor and Council, can you see the, my screen right now?
Yes.
Okay. Ultimately, in the development agreement, as it currently is written, every time the developer adds one thousand new residents, five acres of ground needs to be dedicated to San Quentin City. And when I say dedicated, it's fee titled dedicated land. However, that is not necessarily always advantageous to the city. We currently have, I believe, about twelve acres just north of the LDS church out in Summit Ridge that is vacant and has not yet been improved by the city. And every time we add more acreage, it's more construction costs and more maintenance for our public works crews. Yet, we want to follow the intent and the desire of the overall Summit Ridge development by providing the amenities for the residents as they move in that they can enjoy. And we recognize that there is some opportunities for us to work in partnership with the development community, and I say community because it used to be H two Utah One was the developer, and now there are multiple parties entering into this from what's now known as USP or Utah Summit Partners, which is a a partnership between Salisbury Construction and Ivory Homes, as well as a new proposal that's being considered for the D R Horton project called The Towns on the eastern side of the railroad tracks. So with that said, there are other alternatives that the city can enjoy, yet maintain the spirit of the development agreement. Those would include the possibility of allowing for a private dedication of improved park grounds. So for example, in the towns area, they are proposing to put in eight acres of park and trail open space areas that would be fully constructed by the developer and maintained by the HOA of that area, but would only be used by the homeowners of that area, those four hundred and twenty-nine new units. Because it wouldn't be able to be used by the entire city, it's proposed that we would only give a portion of credit for that, those improvements, which would be an eighty percent proportionality. On the other hand, we have grounds, say, over in the hills called the Knoll, which presents some beautiful vistas and some natural trails that can be constructed with a trailhead and seating area on non-developable or undevelopable areas that couldn't have your traditional park or home construction take place. Because there's a vast amount of that type of land out there, and we would still want to maintain a good ratio of the type of usable parks that could be enjoyed by our public, we would only propose a twenty percent credit in that area. And then in some cases, we want to accept money in lieu of or, or projects in lieu of where the developer can come in and put improvements in on city, city land so that it's immediately enjoyed by the residents of that area for which either they will get credit towards their land dedication, or they will get reimbursed through impact fees over time. So this amendment contemplates allowing flexibility on a per-project basis that would lessen the impact on the overall, on the, the financial impact of the city to put improvements in and the long-term financial impact on the city and the public works crew through maintaining those improvements, but allow those improvements to go in, in some cases being maintained or constructed by the HOA. We created a language for development agreement amendment that is before you for your consideration. And one of the concerns was, that was shared by the master developer, Mr. Rob Horlocker, was that, oh, as initially presented, D R Horton, the proposal, the entity proposing the towns was considered a signer to this agreement. However, they are currently not a home, a property owner in this area. And as they assume the ownership of this property, they would fall under the terms of this development agreement and have accepted that with us and verbally done so and also acknowledge that they would be willing to abide by that under a buyer beware type of a situation when they entered into that agreement with Mr. Horlocker to acquire his property. So they are requesting and Mr. Horlocker is requesting that D R Horton be removed. Consequently, the, the proposed resolution that was put before you was modified this afternoon by our legal counsel to remove D R Horton in that capacity. Likewise, we didn't realize this, but Mr. Mr. Horlocker was editing the, the document on his end to do the same, but also had a few other items that he wanted to have considered and had not had yet the opportunity to present those to us. We believe that fundamentally, we have an agreement that's ready for your consideration. And I'm going to scroll down to a memo I just wrote a few minutes ago that would basically allow for us to move forward with the terms outlined in this agreement with slight modifications that would be made pursuant to a resolution that would come, this, this memo can be for you. So after the council's discussion, what we would propose is that the city council would approve the second amendment to the Summit Ridge Development Agreement, Annexation and Development Agreement, pursuant to the following terms, additional terms. One, the removal of D R Horton as a signer to the agreement. And as I stated, they would remain a party to be formally notified of this amendment. And two, add definitions and clarification, clarifying language as to the terms park, community, neighborhood, pocket park, open space, city open space, private open space and private parks as outlined in our two thousand sixteen San Quentin City Parks and Trails Master Plan. Three, the acceptance of all lands for the aforementioned parks and open spaces must be mutually agreed upon by both the city and the developer, not just as approved by the developer. Four, that the parkland dedication shortfall, any shortfalls that we have, and I say a shortfall because in the towns, they were anticipating having eight acres of grounds that would be installed by the developer and maintained by the developer, but we're only giving them eighty percent credit. So there would be a shortfall of one point six acres. In this particular shortfall, through discussions with the developer, Mr. Horlocker, this shortfall would be satisfied through a mutually agreed upon installation plan of the western half of the Harvest View Drive, that's the city's half of that road, the installation of a playground at Harvest View Sports Complex, and the installation of additional road base at the Harvest View Sports Complex to provide the additional partner, to provide additional parking. And all of those improvements would be enjoyed by the entire city. Fifth, the developer accepts the elimination of any and all revisionary clauses to the public facility site, that is, the thirty-five acres known as the Harvest View Soccer Sports Complex. And that they allow the city to, one, have the option that a portion of the public facility site could be sold without encumbrance to governmental or quasi-governmental entities such as UTA if Front Runner ever comes down, or USU if they ever decide to put a campus in or, or other quasi-governmental entities, and preserves the city's existing right to sell a portion of the public facility site for commercial purposes pursuant to the existing rights enjoyed by the city to do so under the terms and provisions of the First Amendment to the Summit Ridge Annexation and Development Agreement of two thousand and six. Part of the original proposal that is before you is also that the, it's already inclusive, included in, is not on this extra list, is that the city would have the right to trade the property that is about to be dedicated for a new fire station on, in the hills area with its own property down by the soccer park, square foot per square foot, so that the fire station could be built closer to the freeway, and so that a park area could be built in the residential area of the hills and not necessarily have to have a fire station there that would wake people up at night. That's already a provision. All of that would be put into the agreement, subject to our attorney approval. And I say that because we have an amendment that's almost there that just needs to have these things added. They have proposed an agreement that has much of this there, almost as if there's a bill coming from the House and a bill coming from the Senate, and the two needs to be merged. And so all of this would be subject to our city attorney's approval, working with Mr. Horlocker's attorney, of course, until the language is satisfied pursuant to the terms that are outlined before you. And of course, if anything substantive came up that didn't meet our city attorney's approval or needed to be ratified by our council, that that approved agreement would not be executed, and rather, it would come back to our city council to you in a later, in a future meeting. So with that, we put it to you for your discussion, and if the council is inclined to approve this, we would approve it as written on this sheet to ensure that all points are included.
Okay, any questions, comments, Council?
I got a question for Ben. Where did you come up with the eighty percent, Ben? Just curious.
We were, it was just through negotiations with Mr. Horlocker. So we recognize that there's a lot of cost involved with them installing and installing, improving and maintaining all of those improvements over the long term. And so, you know, it's almost as if it's a fully improved park that granted, it only can be used by the residents of that area, but it's, it's something the city does not have to put in or maintain or take care of. So because it's so fully improved, we felt that, that it erred on the side of giving more credit than not. And, and that's where the eighty percent came up with. On the other hand, the open area spaces, which would also be improved by the developer, they would be putting in trailhead sites and be putting in all the, the trails that would be improved pursuant to our Trails Master Plan and any seating areas. And those would actually be maintained by the, that HOA as well. That, for us, although it's fully improved and it's ready to go, and I say fully, I mean, to a natural extent, it's, it is so vast of an area, and it couldn't be used for, say, soccer games or baseball or anything, that a twenty percent credit seemed more appropriate in those areas. And it just came through negotiations to come up with those two sets of numbers.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Ben, what's the timing on bullet point four with the, the completion of the Harvest View Drive and then the additional parking and gravel and whatnot at the complex?
We actually, we went through this with him today. We originally were talking about doing it, having money in lieu of, but they, they would rather just, rather than trying to figure out what is the value of one point six acres, because it's really hard to come up with a value. You can't really appraise city property, and it's, it's hard to calculate it from a per-unit value. Ultimately, we just came up with the idea that these three improvements, the road, finishing off the road, putting in the parking and putting in a playground would be most beneficial to them and to us. And so I anticipate that that would be done in a phased approach with the construction of, of that road. When they're putting in their half of the road, they would be putting in our half of the road. And I believe Norm or Jason, that is part of phase one of their development, is that they have to pay, put that road in. And then, and the road base would likely come in right with the road. I'm not sure about the timing of the playground equipment. That may come with a second phase. But we, we hadn't talked about that, but if you want to include that, that it should all be part of, you know, the final or recognition of, of phase one, you could. Norm or Jason, do you want to speak to that?
Well, Ben, that is not part of phase one. Phase one is the loop road that runs through the inner part of the development adjacent to the commercial. This would be, I believe it's phase three or four, so it's not potentially put, wouldn't be this year, but maybe the following year, but it is not part of phase one. That is not, and Ben's right, we've not talked about timing or anything of that nature, but it would more than likely go in at the time of phasing in those two phases. I can pull that up and get back to you on that.
Okay, well, he's pulling that up. My, maybe we, we would suggest then that the playground equipment go in as part of phase one, and that the road go in as part of the phase that would be corresponding to the construction of the remainder of that road. Norm's bringing that up right now.
Well, just my two thoughts is we, we've discussed this gravel for a while. We started this last year during the season, and we put it off because we were getting into October. So I, I think the gravel and the additional parking needs to get addressed sooner than later. And I'm not super concerned about the road, but then my other question is, what is the definition of a playground? Because
We have an estimate right now of a, of a playground. It's a value of about seventy-seven thousand dollars, and it has all the components. It's what the council has already seen. That's what we would hold them to. So if the council were to amend this motion as, as outlined by saying that the, the parking area road base and the playground would go in with phase one, and that the road improvements would go in with the phase corresponding to their installation of Harvest View Drive, that would seem appropriate and fair.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. It's just, I just want to make sure, because on the rec board, we've discussed this park and, and as a city council, we've discussed that parking, so I'm fine with that as well.
I agree.
I agree with that.
Is the council ready to move forward with the motion? Because I could state it if, if that makes it easier and someone could move to approve it. Is the council ready to move forward with the motion, cause I could state it if if that makes it easier and someone could move to approve it? Okay. Um mayor and council staff recommends that we would approve the second amendment to the development agreement with attorney. Uh with uh Mr. Rob Rob Horlocker and USP. Um with the amendment that was proposed by our legal counsel. With the following modifications, that the removal of the D R Horton as a signer to the agreement. To add the definitions as outlined in the memo. To accept all lands for the aforementioned park and open spaces. That they must be mutually agreed upon by both the city and the developer, not just the developer. That the Parkland Dedication Shortfall would be uh solved through um a phase one. Um and uh uh installation of a playground uh sufficient to the plans. Privileously viewed by the council, as well as phase one uh improvements to parking by adding additional road base. And uh the uh installation of the um western half of Harvest View Drive at. Uh corresponding to the phase of improvement for which the Harvest View Drive would be constructed. Uh that the developer accepts the eli- uh elimination of all revisionary clauses for the public facility site, thirty-five acres, and allows the city to have. The option um to sell a portion of that pu- public facility site without encumbrance. Uh to any governmental or quasi-governmental entity, and that the city re- um retains its rights to sell. For commercial purposes pursuant to the rights that it currently under enjoys. Um under the terms and provisions of the First Amendment to the Summit Ridge Annexation and Development Agreement of two thousand and six. That it has the right to uh transfer its fire station from the hills area to the. Um public facility site and move park ground up to the hills area at its uh discretion. And all of this would be subject to um the review and approval or our city attorney with any substantive changes coming back to the council if necessary. Otherwise, to be approved by the legal counsel of both sides and executed by the mayor once it has met his satisfaction.
I'll make that motion.
Did you mention the additional road base?
And phase one, yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Montoya, do we have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Councilmember Bowman, uh any further discussion on this? If not, Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
Councilmember Bowman?
Aye.
And Councilman, who is it, Miller?
Meacham.
Oh, Meacham, Councilman Meacham.
Aye.
Thank you, that was unanimous. All right, moving on. We have item nine C, Resolution zero four zero eight, two thousand twenty. A resolution approving Santaquin City's Recreation Arts and Parks Rap Tax Program Guidelines.
Mayor and council, um this is, it is required of us um with the approval and the. Uh adoption of the rap tax within Santaquin City as approved by the voters in two thousand eighteen. For us to have procedures in place for the use of said funds. And to do so with a committee involved in its recommendation to the council. Hence the formation of a rec- a rap tax committee that was outlined by ordinance um of the council previously. And now policies by which they would um evaluate and score projects and allocate those funds as. As they deem appropriate, they would be making recommendations and ultimately all decision-making and approvals um are retained unto the city council. Um I appreciate our Community Services Director, John Bradley, for putting together um a very robust. Um policies and procedures on how this would go forward, I know he modeled after Spanish Fork City and their program. And um it's ready for your consideration, if there are any questions from the council with regard to the um policies that have been established.
Any thoughts, council?
I think it looks really great.
If nothing else, I look for a motion.
Mister Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt Santaquin City Resolution zero four zero eight, two thousand twenty. A resolution establishing procedures for the Santaquin City Rap Tax Program.
We have a motion by Councilmember Montoya, do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, we have a second by Councilman Meacham. Any did any further discussion? If not, Councilman Hathaway?
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
Councilmember Bowman?
Aye.
And Councilman Meacham?
Aye.
Thank you, that was unanimous. Okay, we have item nine D, Ordinance zero four zero one, two thousand twenty. An ordinance amending Santaquin City Code Sections ten dash two dash two, ten dash fourteen dash six. And ten dash seven F dash three, code related to car wash services.
All right, mayor and council, so this is a proposed amendment uh to the Santaquin City Code in a. Various locations related to car washes, so uh. If if you'd like me to walk through this step by step, I'm happy to do that, uh I'm assuming that you guys have been able to look at this and and uh. And and in preparation for the meeting, so uh just, I guess in a nutshell, what this is doing is is providing some language related to car washes. Which hasn't uh existed in our ordinance up to this time, uh our ordinance is is remained pretty silent when it comes to car washes, other than it being. An accessory used to uh a land use like a gas station. So uh we provide a definition for a car wash, we we allow it to be an accessory used to to minor and major automotive service repair. Uh there's some language related to to uh allowing uh a conditional use for. Certain circumstances where where queuing uh could be a a concern. And then uh allowance for a car wash to be a standalone use in the interchange commercial zone or the C one zone. So um if you want me to go into more detail, I'm happy to to go through that language with you, uh but let me know if you have any questions.
I'm having a hard time staying awake right now, so don't go through that, the rest of that language. Uh any questions, any concerns?
Yes, um. Jason, am I understanding that the. The rules, if you will, that are outlined for queuing. Um apply not only to car washes, but any commercial business that has a drive-through feature? Did I, did I read that in there?
So that would be correct, so the the language addressing queuing is in the parking chapter of the code. So there's there's standard requirements for queuing, but uh there may be situations where where an applicant could. Apply for a uh conditional use permit to address queuing in a in a way that is is contrary to some of those regular provisions, but. Uh that conditional use is really a tool for us to be able to to monitor conditions. Uh and and if they're not met, then we could revoke that conditional use permit and and address it that way.
Thank you, I actually like the rules as they're outlined, I think they make sense, thank you.
All right, any others? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mister Mayor, I will make a motion to adopt ordinance number zero four dash zero one dash two thousand twenty, which amends various sections. Of Santaquin City Code related to car wash service.
Thank you, we have a motion by Councilmember Montoya, do we have a second?
I'll second it, Mayor.
We have a second by Councilman Meacham, any further discussion on this? If not, Councilman Meacham?
Aye.
Councilmember Bowman?
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
And Councilman Hathaway?
Aye.
Thank you, that was unanimous. Our next item is nine E, Ordinance zero four zero two, two thousand twenty. An ordinance amending Santaquin City Code Section ten dash seven K dash four. Dash E to clarify acceptable ground cover in a planned unit development, P U D.
All right, mayor and council, this is, this is another one that I I could, I don't need to go into too much detail, it's a fairly straightforward ordinance, but. As you can see from all the public comments that we had today, uh that that those public comments were specifically related to this agenda item. Right now in the P U D ordinance, uh the the language is a little vague and ambiguous about the the required. Uh landscaping that they need to provide upfront um being a part of a P U D, so uh the only. Language that's in there that that we have to work with is is acceptable ground cover, there are specifics to landscaping that there be like two trees. Four shrubs and things like that, but in terms of something that would would uh give us direction on on a gravel parking area. There just wasn't that detail, so we've had a number of contractors that have expressed interest in in this concept. And so we're bringing it forward to you today, I should also mention, I feel like this is, this is a good. Uh amendment to make because this is in harmony with the recent uh development agreement that was approved for the foothold of. Uh subdivision where, under circumst- circumstances, if they uh adjusted the setbacks uh as. Permitted per that that development agreement amendment, they would be uh required to provide a a gravel parking area for. For newer homes, so with that said, this this language will clarify that and will give people the option to. Uh provide a gravel parking area uh under certain regulations that are are fairly straightforward.
Hey, any any questions, comments, I see the planning commission forwarded a unanimous recommended approval on it, so. Any thoughts? If not, I'll look for a motion.
Mister Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance number zero four zero two, two thousand twenty. Which amends section ten dash seven K dash four, which will clarify that gravel parking area on the. Side of a garage may be considered as acceptable ground cover in a planned unit development.
We have a motion by Councilman Miller, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Montoya, any further discussion on this ordinance? If not, Councilmember Bowman?
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Councilman Hathaway?
Aye.
And Councilman Meacham?
Aye.
Thank you, that was unanimous. Moving on, item nine F, Ordinance zero four zero three, two thousand twenty. An ordinance amending Santaquin City Code Section eleven dash one dash four. To clarify the land use authority for subdivisions consisting of three lots or less.
All right, mayor and council, this is another proposed uh ordinance amendment, and really this is just a cleanup item, so since I've I've worked for the city and and. For years previously, it's my understanding that that any subdivision that uh has three lots or less. Uh would would be subject to approval from the planning commission, uh that is indicated in the flow chart that you can see in the memo that's on the screen. But with that said, the the written language in the code uh still says that uh. There's a couple discrepancies there, one being that that it's it's less than three lots, which is very different than three lots or less. And there's a discrepancy that still says that it requires council approval, so this is really a housekeeping item. And it's consistent with the way that we've been been processing these these smaller subdivisions that are three lots or less, so. Uh this would be consistent with the flow chart that is currently in our code, this is just cleaning up uh an area in the code uh that is in a separate. Chapter.
Any questions or concerns? The planning commission gave a favorable recommendation as well, uh if there is nothing else, I look for a motion.
Mister Mayor, I make a motion to adopt ordinance number zero four zero three, twenty twenty. Which cleans up discrepancies in the code related to the approval process for subdivisions consisting of three lots or less.
We have a motion by Councilman Meacham, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Hathaway, any further discussion? Hey, if not, uh Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Councilman Hathaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya?
Aye.
Councilman Meacham?
Aye.
Councilmember Bowman?
Aye.
Thank you, that was unanimous. Our next item is item nine G, Discussion of Possible Action. Enhancing Emergency Backup Power at the Public Safety Building.
Mayor and council, this was an item that was discussed during your budget planning session all day retreat and. Is a project um that was very apparent when we had the uh power outage um. Not horribly long ago, and it it knocked out one of our servers. Um with the pandemic and all of the issues associated therein, as well as the earthquake that we had not too long ago. The mayor asked that we bring this to the council for your consideration as a potential project to do this year, rather than in uh the few, the subsequent year. Um to ensure that this building, the one that we're in currently, or many of us are in today. Um remains uh fully powered during any emergency event. Um our engineering staff has has gone out and obtained uh the cost estimates and and looked at the load of this building. And did so in accordance with um a vendor that is on this Utah State Procurement website, which means they've already gone through all bidding. Um for an amount and of uh sixty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. Um it's important to note that um every day is a new day when it comes to the federal stimulus package, the CARE Act. As well as um there is now talk at the federal level of um. And and a new um Infrastructure Act, very similar to what was done in two thousand eight. To put shovel-ready jobs um out there and or provide funding for these type of emergency improvements. Uh both both emergency improvements in the form of the power that you see here, as well as infrastructure improvements improvements in general, such as a new town hall. Um and those are being uh updated each and every day, um literally billions of dollars have been allocated to every single agency. And they're trying to figure out the parameters and put their arms around how that money is to be distributed. And so what we are looking for is uh the council's approval for us to move forward with the authorization of. Of um obtaining this uh type of a backup power device for this building. But do so after exhausting our ability to um see if there's any grant funding that becomes available. And any Santaquin City funds would be used as a match to any stimulus funds that would be coming in, to the extent that. Um it very well might go uh completely on our shoulders as far as providing backup. So what we've we've slightly modified this uh motion as proposed by our city engineer. To state the motion to authorize city staff to pursue grant funding for the purchase of an installation of an emergency backup generator. And transfer switch to Santaquin City, uh for the Santaquin City Public Safety E O C building, this building. And supplement said funding in the amount of up to seventy thousand dollars, so if we get no grants, we we fund the whole thing. And further direct staff to move forward with the purchase and installation of said equipment. This is clearly a policy decision, whether we do it this year or in the future years, and um and so we put it to you and your consideration.
All right, Ben, if I remind me now, um our existing generator is undersized, right, and?
It is undersized, power's about a third of this building, and it does not kick on, uh it's. So the building, the old public safety building that we knocked down next to Zine's Bank. It was a generator that was purchased for that building back when um Mayor DeGraffery built it, when he was. Uh a young uh guy working with his dad. And um that's the same power generator that we're working with today, it kicks on occasionally. Uh when the power goes out, sometimes, sometimes later. Um but it will only uh feed about a third of the circuits here, and uh we found out. Uh not too long ago that because it came on uh late and had a power surge, it ended up burning up a thirty thousand dollar server. Of ours in our server room not too long ago.
Hey, any other thoughts, questions?
No, I think it's important to to update that, in my opinion.
Yes, especially being that public safety building, we have to have power here.
Right.
In an emergency, we have to have it.
Yep.
So I look for a motion.
I'll motion to authorize city staff to pursue grant funding for the purpose and installation of an emergency backup generator and transfer switch for the Santaquin City Public Safety E O C building and supplement said funding in the amount of up to seventy thousand dollars and further direct staff to move forward with the purchase and installation of said equipment.
We have a motion by Councilmember Bowman. Do we have a second?
A second.
This is easy to know who says, does it because the green thing lights up around them. So we have a second by Councilmember Montoya. And so we'll have a roll call now. Councilman Meacham.
Aye.
Councilmember Bowman.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Councilman Miller.
Aye.
And Councilman Hathaway.
Aye.
Thank you. That was unanimous. Okay, we have item nine H, discussing, discussion and possible action regarding city facilities.
Mayor and Council, during your last work meeting where we were all gathered together, we discussed moving forward or not moving forward with our city plans for a new city hall. And we had been working on the development of said plans and the financing package and felt that at that time that it wouldn't be prudent to move forward because of the public perception of all the ramifications coming from the COVID nineteen virus, as well as the secondary effect of all of the negative impacts to the economy. However, with that said, two things have jumped up of late. One, the financial markets have been on a roller coaster and have dropped the interest rates for municipal bonds significantly. When I contacted the council by email to let them know what was going on, the rates were in the one percent. They have leveled off at the two percent range again, but it is anticipated that they're going to drop back down to the one percent. But the roller coaster effect is starting to smooth out and the rates are coming ever lower. That could be a significant savings to the residents of Santaquin City by hundreds of thousands of dollars, depending upon where the interest rates lock in. Cedar City, for example, recently just locked in their, their bond that they just sold for, I think one point one five percent. We are going to find out about Park City and there's another city up north, I can't remember, who both have bond sales that are out right now that will close beginning of next week. And we'll see what their, their interest rates are coming in at. The second issue that's hitting us of late is that I've been diving into the CARE Act and looking at the different potential funding options. And there is one under USDA rural development. USDA and R D, R D has a really good working relationship with Santaquin City or vice versa and was a major funding partner for the water reclamation facility on our north end of town. They have been given a significant amount of money to put forth to for items and one of the items listed in there are town halls. And they don't have any procedures yet for the application of those funds or how to acquire those funds and whether they would be low interest, no interest, or even partially grant-funded opportunities. But clearly the federal government is looking to stabilize the account, economy. And if another stimulus package goes forward, which is highly likely, that would be all infrastructure-related, it would be to rebuild bridges and roads and, and also to do things like a new town hall that would be beneficial to small communities and for Asian first responders and emergency operation centers and all the such. With that being said, we want to retain flexibility, if you will, that we don't hold off from moving forward with this, this clearly established need within our community to provide additional space for, for our city staff to operate so that the public safety folks continue, can continue to grow in this building for which this building was intended and do so potentially at significant reduced costs by moving forward during an opportunity where we could benefit from some of the acts of the federal government to stabilize the economy. And so that's part one of this discussion is, is the council okay with allowing the city staff to pursue, pursue this direction? And when appropriate, to bring the necessary required funding documents to the council for your consideration, regardless of the timeframe. And then I'll get into the second part after you have this discussion.
Any thoughts, Council?
I think we should take advantage of, of a good possible funding climate while it exists.
I definitely think it would be irresponsible for us to not look at it right now. If we can save the residents hundreds of thousands of dollars, it's irresponsible to not do that.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree as well.
I agree.
Okay. The second half of the financial discussion that we wanted to have relates to some work that I've been having Aaron do and I really appreciate his good work in this, this area. For many of us who were in local government during two thousand seven and two thousand eight, you'll recall that there started to be a downturn of the economy in the housing market. And every month that that took hold, the next month, we kept thinking it's going to get better and it's going to get better. And, and it just kept getting worse because of all of the bad mortgages that were out there and it just kept compounding and getting worse and worse and worse, to the extent that the cities did not react quick enough to any potential downturn until it was too late. And then it really negatively affected the communities. Some communities went through layoffs, other communities went through furloughs and things like that. The benefit of going through that experience in two thousand and eight is that most cities, like Santaquin City, have done everything they can to put resources away. We, we currently stand in a very healthy financial situation. We have our reserves up to the twenty-five percent max allowed by the state. We're very well prepared and we've been running very lean for that purpose. So that as we walk into this potential downturn in the economy, we're in a much better position. But secondarily, we don't want to not react more quickly. We want to look at what we're doing and ensure that we're taking the steps necessary on a month-by-month basis and reflecting our expenditures so that they match cash flows. So we've never put ourselves in a negative position. Your responsibility, of course, as a, as a elected body, is to take care of the public health and safety of the community. And part of that is the public trust, meaning the finances of the city. And so part of maintaining the public trust is ensure that, number one, you meet all debt service obligations. That's your primary financial responsibility so that we maintain our credit rating and all that type of thing. And so that becomes number one. Quickly follow the lap by taking care of our city staff. We have an exceptional city staff and we don't want to lose them or have anything negative or detrimental hit them, such as layoffs or furloughs or anything. Right now, we're not in that situation that we need to worry about that, but we want to make sure we take steps necessary. And then the third is to adjust discretionary spending such that maybe we delay projects or take things on, on a slower pace to ensure that we have the resources on hand before we move forward with anything unnecessarily. Now, that's not to say that some projects can't move forward because, for example, gas tax funds can only be used on road maintenance projects. We can't use those to supplement some other area of the city. So as those funds become available, we should take on road projects because it, it creates economic stimulus for our local region. And we couldn't use those funds for any other purpose anyway. But what we are suggesting right now is that some of the steps that we are recommending to move forward with and seek your, your concurrence on is one, any open positions that we have right now that haven't been filled, that we don't fill them until such time that the economy stabilizes and we feel ready to fill them. That would be the engineer and training position, as well as the administrative person in the engineering. We're, we're recommending holding on those. Just yesterday, part of my report is to let you know that Andres Sefalo, the person, new person in our events, has decided that this position is not meet, meet her desires or expectations. And so she has resigned. We, we don't, we wish her the very best. She's a fantastic lady, but we don't anticipate filling her position right now. And we just hold off and hire more slowly those essential positions. The police officer, one is an essential one that was already approved by the council, so we do want to move forward with that. But anything that we can hold off, we do. Likewise, we want to continue to look at our salary increases for the remainder of this fiscal year through June thirtieth because the rest of the staff has enjoyed it and have been evaluated on a merit-based system. And we have sufficient resources that we can continue to allow salary increases to go forward based on merit between now and June thirtieth. But next year, we would propose that we, we would approve through the budget process, the ability to allow raises to go forward through merit and cost of living, but not implement those until such time that the council felt comfortable that our financial, our revenues coming in matches the anticipated expenditures going out so that we don't escalate a problem that doesn't necessarily need to be escalated. We don't want to put this on the backs of our employees, but we want to take prudence in maybe delaying a month or two the rollout of a COLA, for example, or something of that nature. We are also looking at all of the projects that we have left this year, as well as the projects that we anticipate for next year. And we want to put those on a priority-based system so that as money becomes available, we can bring them to the council, the council can approve and let resources go, but we're not overspending. In short, we want to slow the flow so that it matches our revenues at all times. And looking at the revenues that would be impacted by the downturn right now, we're actually in a pretty good position and it's for a sad reason, and that is that we don't have a huge point-of-sale tax base. We anticipate that we will be negatively impacted on our sales taxes to some degree because overall spending has gone down, but not significantly in this year. In fact, we're already over our budget projections for this year. And so we very well will come in even right, right dead on where we think we're going to be. But that would be about a two hundred thousand dollar swing, two to three hundred thousand dollar swing from where our trajectory would have been had, had the COVID nineteen not taken place. So we're coming in on target, but by accident, we were actually doing much better coming in above, above target because we were fairly conservative with our revenue, revenue anticipation anyway. But then we just want to be watching it like a hawk all the way through and never let revenues fall short of the expenditures are made. So we, if the council is in concurrence with this, we just want you to be aware every step of the way. And if you have any special direction that you would like us to take, we're happy to, to look at that, but everything feels like it's on a case-by-case basis in, in the months ahead.
Well said, Ben. Any thoughts?
Yeah, I think it's smart. Good plan.
Seeing heads shake up and down and
I agree. I'm, I'm comfortable with proceeding in that way. I think that's wise.
Sounds good, Ben.
Okay, I think everybody's in an agreement.
Sounds good.
All right, go ahead with your report then, Ben.
Okay, I appreciate the council's support on that. Being proactive and reacting early is, is something we didn't do in, in the past. And I'm so, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm a long-tailed cat and I have room for all the rocking chairs at this point. I'm a little nervous and want to make sure we don't do anything that's inappropriate. With regard to our reports, the council will see that there's been a new Dropbox folder added to the council Dropbox page, which is inclusive of all of the reports that we've done thus far. We've distributed them in council meetings, but we actually produce this report each week and distribute it to the council. And it's just highlights of what's going on. The one highlight I really want to point out because it involves many of the people that are party to this meeting right now, and that is the exceptional work that was done by Norm Bagley and Mayor Unsaker and Commission, Councilmember Miller, Shannon Hoffman, because the C D B G grant was unofficially awarded for two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, the full amount. We will have to match, of course, our part. It's, we haven't received the acknowledgement, so we anticipate that formal notification coming. But we've received word through informal sources that that's been approved. So good job, Norman and Kirk and, and Nick on that for sure. Our rap tax policies are completed, the water building was completed. Phil and Todd Rolle do want to get together. You, you saw all four of those wielding agreements come through. They do want to get together with the council after the COVID nineteen stuff is completed. And we're back to our regular meetings so that they can come and have a, a joint work meeting to talk about willing going forward in the future. We've been also working on the Summit Ridge Development Agreement. But I just have to say that so many of our departments are just working so exceptionally well, putting in extra effort and time to serve the needs of our community, adjusting the way they do their jobs, the COVID nineteen response for EMS, fire and police, but just keeping the facility clean here so that we can continue, even from an administration point, administration and community development point of view, we support the people that support the people. Meaning that it doesn't matter how good of a firefighter and police officer, if you're not getting paid, you don't get your paycheck deposited in your account, you're not taking care of your, your own family. And, and so the background that keeps our people out and working and serving our community is so important. And you'll, you'll notice that through all of the reports from each one of our departments and all the good things that they are taking on right now. I encourage you to, now that you have better access to that, those reports to go through in more detail. And if you have any questions about any, any component, component of those projects, just let us know. Sometimes we start talking shop and we, we word things with acronyms and, and, or say things with our, our own set of spectacles on. So there's no question that's not a good question. If you're, if you're unsure of something, just give us, give us a ring, let us know. We can walk you through what's going on in all of the various departments. Any questions for me this week?
I guess you're lucky. Yes, thanks, Ben.
I think the staff, they're, they're doing great.
Okay, up to Norm, city engineer, I mean, city assistant manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a quick update, we're moving forward quickly with our water master plans with Hanson Allen Loos. We're doing the design with Jones and DeMille on the, on the Highland Drive slash Canyon Road, Furnace Road realignment and, and construction through there, going through with design on that. The booster pump station for Foothill Village is a, is a private venture on the side of the, of the developer for, for D R. There's a portion of that that needs a small booster pump station that's going through with design as well. So we have many projects that are moving forward and, and just going through the process. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I got one, Norm. On the, out there on the road from Summit Ridge to the highway, is, where, is the lights coming still? For the, out there by the stop sign?
In theory, they are coming, yes, sir.
I mean, the, the Christmas lights look nice, but
They were ordered months and months and months ago, but because of the back, the supply chain issues coming from China, we just don't have them.
Oh, gotcha.
Two of the lights are supposed to be here this week and the other two are supposed to be here the first week of May, but we would not doubt that because of supply chain issues and other things going on with COVID nineteen, that they may be even further delayed. The, the electrical's all been done, the wiring's there, the foundations are there. It's just a matter of getting the physical lights here and, and then scheduling them to be installed.
Ken, and the only, only other thing I got for you, Norm, is the road up at the alleys that goes from the development over to the south Santaquin exit. Now, they're, they're putting that in the spring, right?
They are putting that in this year, yes, sir. They, we've got a pre-construction meeting on that and they will be starting the construction of that road here fairly shortly. We're still working through some, some design concerns that UDOT has at the south end. But as soon as we have that, they'll have the go-ahead to go ahead and, and create that entire road, the entire distance. And it will, it will have to be done this year according to the pace that they're currently taking to get building permits before. Before we can issue the hundred and fifty-first building permit, that road has to be done and completed and ready to go.
Okay, thanks, sir. And that's kind of what I knew, though I thought they had to do that, so thank you.
That's correct, thank you.
Hey, Norm, is UDOT's concerns legitimate on that south exit?
We're working through that, that's uh, the, so typical with uh, times that we've experienced with UDOT. There's a new crew there now, new staff. And so we're kind of had, having to re-educate them and bring them up to speed on what we've, the, the process that we've already been through. And uh, we're, we're working through that. So I, I don't anticipate any major challenges at this point, but we'll see how that turns out.
Sounds good, thank you. Uh, Community Development Director, Jason Bond.
All right, Mayor and Council, so just to give you a heads up on, on things that are, are coming through the, the process. So uh, next Tuesday for DRC meeting, uh, we have some final Platts in the Hills subdivision in Summit Ridge. Platts DLFNC, um, we also have a concept plan for the Heelis Farms. It'd be for the, the townhomes, that, that was a, a recently, a development agreement was recently approved. That's the, the one that is on the Dugrafa property just north of the grocery store, uh, across the street, uh, from two hundred north. We also have, uh, if you remember a couple of council meetings ago, we had those residents come in with, with a, a request for a crosswalk in front of Apple Valley Elementary. Uh, that is something that we are going to be taking through the process and that will be on the DRC agenda so that we can, can go over that and discuss that. That's, that's what we, we feel confident will be on the agenda. There's other things that are, are in the works that, that uh, we're still waiting for. Uh, some, some resubmit a plans or, or fees paid or, or things like that. But uh, I, I know that the Gray Cliffs preliminary plan uh, is being worked on. That's, that's gone back and forth from staff with significant red lines. So they're working on that before they can uh, get, get that back on a DRC agenda. As for Planning Commission meeting, uh, obviously based on tonight, if we can get a signed executed development agreement uh, with uh, the folks in Summit Ridge. Uh, we're anticipating that that uh, a preliminary plan for the towns at Summit Ridge will be on the, the Planning Commission agenda. Uh, as well as the Melhoff property rezone, which is also down in that area as well. That was tabled at the last Planning Commission meeting, uh, not because the Planning Commission tabled it, but because the applicants wanted to take some extra time to work on the layout of their proposal so that that layout was consistent with, with our current uh, regulations in our code. They wanted that to, to look uh, it like, like something that, that is consistent. So that, that there's, there's uh, no question about uh, their, their proposal. And then finally, we uh, we've, we've been working with the, the, the um, property. Or sorry, the, the project manager for the grocery store and uh, connected to that grocery store is an Ace Hardware. And something that they've been working on and, and been working with staff on is, is providing for a um, propane fill station. That's, that's something that's really important to that Ace Hardware. So we've, we've gone back and forth about a good location for that. Uh, I feel like we've, we've really come to a good uh, solution to, to where that will work. And, and it'll be least impactful to the flow in the parking lot. However, they would need to, to take up a couple of parking spots in order to make that fill station work in that location. So as with the, the extra um, pad site that, that we looked at, we did the parking analysis and looked at it as, as something that would, would allow for additional services in the community. But would, would uh, uh, you know, not leave a, a, a significant amount of, of parking spaces just left empty for, for the majority of the time. The Planning Commission needs to approve for any sort of uh, uh, change in the, the, the parking requirement. So we'll take that to the Planning Commission. I don't foresee that there's going to be any issues with that. Uh, something that I learned today that, that I think uh, the council will, will appreciate is, is uh, looking closer at their plans and talking with the pro- uh, project manager. All of the parking stalls in that grocery store development are going to be ten feet wide. Our standard is, is at least nine feet. So those are going to be a lot wider stalls and will be a lot nicer for, for a lot of the larger vehicles that are in our community. So with that said, if there is a concern that, that a few more parking stalls will, will be uh, used for, for something other than, than cars parked. Uh, they have that flexibility to, to modify some of the parking stalls to nine feet so that they can um, recoup, if you will. Uh, those lost parking stalls to this, this um, propane fill station. So anyways, those are things that are in the works, things we're anticipating on upcoming DRC and Planning Commission agendas. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Any questions? All right, let's move on to the council reports. Councilman Hathaway, do you have anything?
The only thing I wanted, I want to say is I just want to thank all the staff for the awesome work they're doing during this little fiasco. Anyway, keep up the good work.
I agree, thank you, David. Uh, Councilmember Montoya, do you have anything to report?
Nope, not today.
Okay, Councilmember Bowman, anything to report?
No, not today either.
Councilman Miller, do you have anything?
I do not, Mayor.
Councilman Meekum, do you have anything?
Nothing for me.
All right, that just leaves me then, doesn't it? Well, I got a couple of things. One is Chief Hurst asked me if we want to continue with uh, code enforcements on the nuisance. Uh, what's your thoughts, Council? Whether, should we enforce our, our code or should we wait until this uh, pandemic's over? Or should it make any difference?
What are they seeing issues with?
Right.
It's just mainly yards, you know, the surroundings, front, back, whatever is their code issues. Usually April's a, a month that it starts rolling and he's wanting to know if we want to pursue it right now or should we wait a few months?
So like weeds, is that, is that what we're thinking of?
Like HOV stuff, that people, like neighborhoods with that and it.
Weeds typically come later in the year and HOA is usually enforce their own. This is more um, uh, you know, parking of unregistered vehicles or hoarding of materials and putting them on their front yards. Or anything that's nuisance or related that we would typically start to address in the spring months. Um, like, like I said, weeds would usually come later in the year. Those are the things that they usually try to get a jump on early before they, they start becoming an issue. It's just, is this the appropriate time? Normally, we couple our enforcement with service groups that come in and try to do cleaning as well. Kind of a carrot and a stick type of an approach, um, but we can't do the carrot side of it right now.
So I think part of the concern is there, there's twofold, I think. One is the, the safety of the officers and potentially having an interaction with the, the public that they wouldn't normally have. And the, and I think the other part of it could be some potentially, you know, negative press if, if it were coming down as, again. Being seen as coming down hard on somebody that's on hard times or something of that nature during this, this pandemic.
But I, I have a question, so, but we're currently putting out shut-off notices, correct?
That's something that we're actually doing a little bit differently too. No cities are actually shutting off right now. Um, we're putting out notices that they're past due. Um, it's, we're following the standard process, but we're going over and above. Call us up, make payment arrangements, no matter how small those payments arrangements are, so that we can keep your water on. Because um, no city is turning water off at this time and we're following suit with that at this, at this point. But we still want to go forward and hang those because we probably have a hundred and fifty tanks a, a month that we send out. And maybe about fifty to thirty shut-offs. A lot of people don't pay until they get the tag. And so we feel like we need to still move forward with the tag, but, but do so in a, a very uh, soft and welcoming manner to try to work out payment plans.
That's, that's great, and I think that's how we should handle the nuisance as well. Very soft, we'll work with you.
Right, so keep.
We don't have to go in and, and give them a ticket today, but let's, hey, this is a problem. Let's see if we can get this addressed, very, very soft and let's work with these people. Everyone's in this together, but, but we don't have to be super aggressive, but I don't think we just stop.
I agree with that. I, I agree with that. And instead of having officers go out, um, would it be possible for them to make note of the address or location? And then send a letter during this time so residents are still made aware. And then when we reach a time when social distancing um, is relaxed and things like that, then that letter could be followed up.
Certainly, we can, we can give a soft approach. We can, and we'll probably just hand it to the officers, um, both letter or however they, they deem appropriate. But we'll, we'll follow that soft approach using social distancing and do it in a respectful manner, very much in harmony with what we're doing with utility billing, if that works for me.
I would just like to say that I'm, I'm with Nick though. I'd like to see it done a little bit because if we don't, and we get down the road however long, it, it, then sometimes it's. It becomes a point that it's way hard to get it back.
Yeah, I agree.
We felt the same about utility billing to some degree. We, we moved it from a grace period of, I think of sixty days to a grace period of seven days several years ago. And um, and that has really helped our situation um, in that before it used to be a shut-off wouldn't take place until somebody's utility bill was four, five, six hundred dollars. And it was way too much for them to try to overcome. And it was even worse for landlords uh, when the bill started hitting them. Uh, but by moving it up and be more, and being more aggressive upfront, it's now made it so it's easier to deal with the situation. If we relax too much, we're going to run into that same problem. So I, I agree with, with uh, Councilman Hathaway's recommendation and Councilman Miller's recommendation and, and those concurring. Keep up some pressure, but not in a, an uh, draconian way.
Go along with our citywide cleanup, uh, first week, is it the first week in May? You know, I think that's why we always try and start in April and, and start going that way and to kind of fit in with that. So, well, I'll encourage him to go that route. Uh, the other thing I wanted to, to, to. To bring to your attention is I've been getting a few emails from people and uh, about this current state of the COVID nineteen. And I'll, I'll read a few paragraphs from an email I got today. It said, "Good morning, Mr. Mayor Hansaker. The current state of Utah cannot last long and we need to make a change today. The shutdown of businesses is going to, is doing more harm than good. Please see the attached flyer and see that we need to open up Utah again and not just create stimulus packages." On down to the, she ends with, "We need to look at the full picture and realize that this shutdown is not working and creating more problems than what it is worth. Please help us get Utah open again." And I, I, I look at this and there's a lot of truth in what, what's said in these emails. But yet, we're being told that we need to do this. We need to have this shutdown to protect those who are, who are not sick. But yes, it's affecting a lot of people and I'm sure you see it as well. And I just, I just keep praying that this'll. This'll turn around and that we can get through this. And these small businesses, you know, I look at you, Nick, and I think I, and, and Betsy. And all of you that have small businesses, it's affecting us all. And if we could just hang in there, I know that we could, we'll be better off. If we can just hang in there. So that's all I have, any, any comments on what, anything else? If not, I look for a motion to adjourn.
I agree, I'm trying to support local businesses as much as I can during this time. And I mean, personally, I've emailed the governor. I think it's, it might be better to be shut down for a little bit, a shorter period of time than have it be extended. I don't know the answer though, but I'm with you, like I just, I pray that it'll end sooner than later because it affects every single one of us. So in the meantime, do what we can. If we're going to go out to eat, go out to eat here locally, if we're going to buy groceries, try to buy them here locally, that's what I've been doing.
Thank you. Anything else? I look for a motion to adjourn. Do I get a motion?
All motion to adjourn.
Five of them, Mayor.
It's kind of mumbled, you know, everybody talking at the same time. We have a motion by Councilman Miller. Do we have a second?
All second.
Second by Councilman Hathaway, all in favor, say aye.
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 Yes, I like that, thank you, have a good evening.